And I just wanted everyone to know that obviously Dr. Crawford's here. Kim Tunnel is here in the back. Tim Loper is in here somewhere, and there's him. And Sharon Roy is here. So if you have any questions individually, we hope that they'll hang around here. And when we get done, they can ask or answer some questions after the meeting because we want to go ahead and get with the candidates here. So we're going to go ahead and get started. Just tell the candidates real quick. Alicia is going to be in charge of the time. We're going to do two minutes for the questions. She'll kind of give you a little wave, and that's a minute and a half left. Excuse me, a minute and a half left. I apologize, I'm warm in here and we can't get the air to come on. So I usually like it a bit colder, but anyway, so we're going to go ahead and get started. We have, real quickly, District Five. We have Aaron Martinez and Barbara Smith who's the incumbent. And then Andy ran unopposed, but was gracious to come tonight and go with us in the forum.
Thank you.
So I'm going to start with, we're just going to go in this order, but give a brief introduction of yourself and your relevant experience. Go ahead, Aaron.
First, I want to thank Tyler Proud for the opportunity to come and say hi and introduce myself and meet with you guys. My name's Aaron Martinez and I'm a District Five candidate. I've lived in Tyler for seven years. My wife Catherine is a native Tylerite. We've been married for 16 years. We have two boys, nine and six, who attend Andy Woods Elementary. I'm the grounds manager at Trinity Mother Frances Hospitals and Clinics, and I think that that gives me a unique perspective that will translate well to the school board. I have extensive experience in the private industry, many years of leadership training. I currently work at the largest employer in Tyler, and similarly, T-I-S-D is the fourth largest. I have lots of management experience where I've been responsible for writing budget, operating within a budget, evaluating budgets, reducing budgets. I've managed staffs where I was responsible for making difficult decisions like hiring and firing them. But more importantly, I've been responsible for training and motivating those people to, I've had to create a vision and then get everyone on the same page to create that vision. So certainly think that all those things can translate well to the school board.
Thank you, Barbara.
Hi. I want to give honor to God and to my husband, Dr. Smith. Mother's seven, and I have two children here. One's in corporate senior, one's getting ready to go to Tulane Law School. Then I have three grandchildren here. One is at Moore Middle School, who's exceptional, and I have one in kindergarten at Clarkston. And then I have another one at Jack Elementary. Then also, I want to thank my friends, retired schoolteachers from T-I-S-D, business owners, friends, people I went to Mexico with, five years missionary. And then some of the administrators from T-I-S-D that I worked last year with diligently, making things happen for this upcoming year. Barbara, I'm thankful to you. And the lady from the newspaper. And another lady who came and just prayed over this room so God would be in the center of everything that we do tonight. I lived in Tyler for 30 years. And anybody who's lived in Tyler for 30 years would either know me or know my kids, and therefore you would know my reputation. I've been married for a long time. A long time. A long time.
Said with much joy.
Yes. And while my kids were in school, I said I wanted to know what they were doing. So you know what I did? I became a substitute teacher. And wherever they went to school at, I taught. Not only that, my experience speaks about, I was on the TK Gorman School Board for three years. I taught there for five. When I resigned, they asked me to be on the TK Gorman School Board. I'm excited about this district. I'm just excited about being on the school board because I know I have great potential, great leadership, and I now have to execute things in order to happen. So I'm happy that you're here, and I'm happy that all of my friends are here to support me in this regard.
Thank you. Andy?
Thank you, Barbara. We do have two school board members here. Reverend Mason and Ms. Nation here. No one forced them to come. We're glad they're here. Appreciate you guys letting me come. Andy Burfield, I was born and raised in Tyler. I went to SMU on an athletic scholarship. Got out of there, went to law school, got done with law school in 96 and moved back to Tyler. And a couple of years after moving back, I decided to run for school board in the spring of 2000. And was fortunate enough to be on for seven years. Had a kind of a neat time in T-I-S-D's history. It was a big reform movement in our schools. And we had gone from a time period where T-I-S-D was not that well thought of publicly to a period where we passed the first bond in, I don't know how many years, 50 years probably. So we had a good bit of support. I got off the board for five years. I moved from District One to District Seven. And timed it up where I moved when my term ended. And then after five years, ran for school board in District One, and now starting my second three-year term in District One. I've got three kids, three boys, one at Jack, two at Hubbard right now. One's about to go into Lee's. So I'll have three in three schools.
Terrific. Barbara, we're going to start with you on the same question. So tell us what motivated you to serve at this time on T-I-S-D school.
Okay, well, the superintendent just spoke. Barbara Smith was one of the seven, one of the persons that helped bring him here. So if you like him, you like me. If you don't like him, you don't like me. And then in regards to all those unbelievable things that he did in his first year, Barbara helped him do it. With all the other six board members, okay? So I have credit for that. What happened was like, last year I'd been on the school board for one year, and my daughter, my youngest daughter, mentioned to me, "Mommy, there's a seat open. Why don't you run?" And so I decided to run. And when I stepped in, I stepped into something that I never even dreamed of doing before. And the responsibilities are awesome. I don't work, so I'm free to be available. I love what I'm doing. And I have something valuable to offer. You could look at my experience, my track record. I've been on Habitat for Humanity. I've been on National Day of Prayer for 20 years, it's coming up. And my district, I've lived there for 30 years, 30 years. And so I know that district, and I know that there's some areas in our district that I could take it to another level. My desire and dream is to make that district Andy a permanent district, okay? Now you can compete against me if you like, but I believe in that that will be a number one, District Five will be a number one district because I am on the school board.
Andy, tell us what motivated you to serve at this time.
I think, to know what motivated me this time, you've got to go back to three years ago and why I was crazy enough to get back on the school board is what people tell me. You know, the short answer is, I just couldn't sit back anymore and watch it. Teacher morale was pretty poor. Community support had eroded. And, you know, I just love T-I-S-D too much to sit there and watch it struggle in the community's eyes. We're fortunate enough to get on, got some great help from some board members in this room. A lot of new faces at T-I-S-D, new superintendent, new strategic plan. Really, it's almost like a whole new vision in T-I-S-D right now. So there was no way that I could, after three years, give up in the middle of, I still believe in T-I-S-D. And I think everybody's, you've got to believe in T-I-S-D if you run for a position like this because there's no glory in it. But I have a vision and I have a belief in what T-I-S-D can be. And we can be a great district. We've got a lot of good things going on. But I would love to see us take these, all of these things that Dr. Crawford mentioned and others that we'll be expanding on in the next couple of years. And I would love to see us capitalize on that and show people that we can manage a school district globally and have it be successful.
Thank you. Aaron, same thing. Tell us what motivated you to serve at this time on the T-I-S-D school.
Obviously, my boys are the biggest motivator, ensuring that they get, and their friends and, you know, everyone else at school gets the best opportunities. But I also feel like all of us have a responsibility to give back. And I have a long history of community service, and I see this as a big opportunity to be a part of something that I'm passionate about as well. So kind of expounding on what Andy was saying, I think there's a huge perception, and it starts nationally and kind of trickles down with, the public schools have massive critical issues. And I had a great experience with public school. My kids are having a great experience. We love our teachers, we love our administrators, and I'm in the classroom quite a bit and I see it firsthand. So I'm just, I'm tired of hearing the negativity. And the reality is, is it can always be better. But right now in T-I-S-D, students have more opportunities than they've ever had before. And I'd want to be a part of improving that perception and trying to be a part of the solution.
Thank you. Andy, we'll start with you on this one. Please describe your past involvement with and in T-I-S-D schools.
Past involvement, I've kind of gotten into a little of that. When I left high school and went to college, I think when I got done with college and law school, I really realized what the impact T-I-S-D had had on my life. I had what the teachers, some of the individual teachers I'll never forget, some of the coaches I had that I'll never forget. And the overall experience in Tyler, Texas, a town our size, the community that's involved in our public school system. And I've always felt like I owed a debt to T-I-S-D for preparing me for life. And so when I got back and ran for school board, I mean, I don't want to go in the list of all the different things. You know, I think I added it up as of this month, I've had 240 hall school board meetings that I've gone to. And so, you know, I've been at every campus, I've been in, I've seen five different superintendents, I've seen five different bond elections. So, you know, it's kind of a loaded question. I've seen a lot. My involvement's been a lot, it will continue to be a lot. I take the job seriously. And anytime that, I think complacency kills us in T-I-S-D. And it's a hard place not to be complacent. As a board member, sometimes you can say, "Well, I won't really notice what I'm doing today. I've got a real job somewhere else." So if I only plug in every week or so, you know, I mean, that's something that we always have to guard against, and I think T-I-S-D in general has to guard against that. And I feel like we're doing that.
Aaron, same question. Please describe your past involvement with and in T-I-S-D school.
Well, I'm a parent and a very active volunteer. I'm lucky enough to have the opportunity and flexibility with my job that it gives me the chance to be on campus quite a bit, I mean, daily, interacting with teachers and students. But I think that I spend more time than most fathers, so I try to, I take the responsibility of that where, you know, I try to make up for, you know, some of the other kids' parents who can't be around. In addition, since I started this pursuit, I've contacted other PTAs in District Five and had the opportunity to go and do some volunteer hours with their PTAs as well. Because I think that spending time there with teachers and students, getting kind of down in the trenches with them generates some respect. So I tried real hard to give as much as I can back to the schools and the community.
Barbara, same thing. Please describe your past involvement with T-I-S-D.
Okay. My kids went to school at here at T-I-S-D. I was on the PTA and the PTA council. So I know the values of PTA. That's why after I was elected, I went to the PTA council. And I said at a meeting that I would like to visit every PTA because I wanted to get a feel and knowledge of the schools in the district. Can you just imagine having seven children and six kids attending T-I-S-D? And then all six of them doing exceptionally well. I believe that I owe T-I-S-D and the 18,000 students here my gifts and callings to help them achieve academic excellence. What I want to do is my leadership skills, my kids went to Ivy League, two of my kids are lawyers, one's a medical doctor at Sloan Kettering. So even now when I go on campus and students approach me and they have a question, headquarters can tell you on the email, students emailing, faculty emailing, I make myself available for the students and the faculty and the administrator. I'm known in the community. And so I know that the system works, and I want to be able to demonstrate to the parents and to the administrators that we can bring forth academic excellence for all students in T-I-S-D.
Thank you. Aaron, we'll start with you on this one. As a school board member, how will you represent the needs and desires of our community and of the students here in Tyler?
Well, the way I envision the reason that school government was set up this way was to represent the community and then to be accountable to the community. So the purpose then would be that board members are accountable because you in fact see them out at the grocery store, at the mall, at the movies. Ideally, in my mind, our children would go to school together. In school, you would see them at PTA meetings, you would interact with them at Meet the Teacher, sporting events. But I think the biggest way is just to listen and talk. I've been able to spend time visiting with members of the community, and some people aren't shy when asked for their opinion. Obviously, there's a need to kind of sort through the comments and make informed decisions. And I think that my management background certainly is beneficial in that regard.
Barbara? As a school board member, how would you represent the needs and desires of our community and of the students here in Tyler?
I'm thankful that I had an opponent this time because now I can see the community really wants to be involved. Especially the mayor, he's passionate about T-I-S-D and how he can be involved in helping the students. Business leaders are interested in helping to develop character in the classroom and investing money in those areas. So by me stepping out and looking at the community from another perspective, I'm able to see the bigger picture. I'm a rational evaluator of issues, and I know that there's some issues that need to be addressed in T-I-S-D. I'm not going to act like that we don't have problems. And I believe that the community can be instrumental in helping us solve some of those problems. About investing financially in the school where maybe we don't have the money, the community would like to invest in the schools. So I'm excited about this next phase because I already have a group of community leaders that will say, "Barbara, I will help those kids go to..."
Andy, same for you. As a school board member, how would you represent the needs and desires of our community and the students here in Tyler?
I think the biggest thing that I see is, when you're elected to a position, you have to realize you represent people. You don't represent yourself or your own interest or selfish interest or what you only think a way something should be. You know, I think that sometimes politicians or even elected people of any sort tend to get elected, and then they think it's just their opinion that matters. So I've always known that the people, and especially taxpayers, you know, not just, there's kind of some pressure that you either have to be all-in with T-I-S-D on every issue or you're not, you know, in the group. And I just don't see it that way. I see, I love T-I-S-D. I support the administration when I'm in agreement with what the community is with what they're doing. So I feel like that that is probably something that ends up helping everybody in the end, even though it's a little uncomfortable at times. I would say the second thing is, we've got to really push for high expectations right now. We're at a time that society's kind of pushing us against us in that area, I feel like. And we really have to raise our expectations across the board in T-I-S-D for us to see the kind of results we want to.
Barbara will start with you on this question. Many in the Tyler community, represented by Tyler Proud, are raising and improving our high schools. Tell us your thoughts about our high school facilities. Have you visited campuses? And how would your approach needed improvements and the increasing student?
Yes, I've visited both high schools many times. And matter of fact, you know, my children attended both schools, John Tyler Ivy Program and Robert E. Lee. So I'm praying with each of their physical structure. Matter of fact, there are some retired high school teachers in the audience today, and they're aware of those particular high schools. Work is needed to improve the facilities, but all factors must be critically scrutinized, particularly the degree of debt to be entered into when we go to the next level. How the community feels about us building new high schools, and when is the right time. My primary focus right now on the school board is internal housecleaning, not external. I see those test scores. It's time for us to address the test scores. I know that we have to build new high schools. Right now, I'm focused on the internal, taking those kids so that when they finish high school, the CTE building, whatever they desire, that we put them out there and they're able to function in society.
Andy? Many in the Tyler community, represented by Tyler Proud, are raising and improving our high schools. Tell your thoughts about the high school facilities and how your approach needed improvements for the increasing number of students.
Well, they're two different high schools. Sometimes we lump them both together. Lee is older than John Tyler. It's uglier than John Tyler. But it's what we've got right now. And there is a lot of talk, and if any of you travel the state and see what's going on around our state and some of the high schools that are being built, it's hard not to want that right now. And you see what other people have and how nice it would be to be in their shoes. But Tyler's its own community. And Tyler will provide T-I-S-D with new high schools when Tyler's ready to. And I have seen T-I-S-D and other entities decide when they were ready to do things and the community wasn't ready, and it doesn't work out for a long time. So what we've got to do at T-I-S-D is focus on the things that we can fix. We've got some academic areas that we've been struggling with for two decades. And we can't just sit back and keep doing the same old things we used to do and hope they get better. We've got to build up all of our extracurricular programs to where they're the best in the county. There's a lot that we can do as the community gets ready to address the high schools. They will let us know when we'll work on that when the time comes.
Aaron, same thing. Many in the Tyler community, represented by Tyler Proud, are raising and improving our high schools. Tell your thoughts about the high school facilities. Have you visited the campuses? And how you approach needed improvements with increasing student numbers?
One of the best parts about being a candidate is access. So I was able to kind of recently visit both campuses just to kind of get a refresher on what they were with and the principles. Both principals were extremely generous with their time. And they don't make any excuses. I mean, they would educate in a barn if that's what we gave them to do. I don't think there's any doubt that they need to be addressed. Everyone I've talked to, virtually everyone I've talked to knows that they're aging. And I kind of think about my industry, which is in healthcare, there's tons of research on a patient's perception of the kind of healthcare they're going to get when they walk into a building regarding appearance and funniness and everything. So, you know, if you go into a hospital and there's trash in the parking lot and the building is dirty, you get this perception that your healthcare is not going to be up to standards. So that's kind of what I thought back to. And I devote a lot of personal pride in how our properties look and certainly try and do my best to make sure that people's perception is the correct one. So to me, that begs the question that if you're a student or a teacher and you're walking into those high schools and it just seems that we're kind of sending contradictory messages that we expect excellence from you, but at the same time, you know, we're going to give you this to work in. So if you, you know, just ask me the question of what I think about the facilities, that sums it up. If you're talking about timing, you know, we can get into the other stuff too.
Thank you. Andy, we'll start with you with this question. How would you determine when and what the Tyler community will support, especially in terms of future bond proposition?
You know, having been involved in as many of these as I have, you get a feel for when Tyler's ready for something. I feel like we've got work to do as a board and as an administration that is probably takes priority over pushing a bond right at this time. However, as we've all agreed, the schools don't put a good face on, our high schools don't, on T-I-S-D, and they will need to be addressed. The great thing about Tyler is we've got a, we've got a large group of active community members who do care about T-I-S-D, who want to see us do the best we can, and I think want to see new high schools. So what we'll do as a board and administration is, at some point in the future, we'll start those conversations. And then you'll get feedback from the community. And the times that these have been successful is when we've listened to the community. We will start that feedback process at some point in the, you know, in the near future. And if the community says, "You know what? You better go back to work," then that's probably what we'll do. If they say, "Let's start working on, working in this direction," then we're here to represent them.
Aaron, same question for you. How would you determine when and what the Tyler community will support, especially in terms of a future bond?
I don't think there's anyone more knowledgeable about that than Andy. I think he can probably sum it up. I think that T-I-S-D has done their part with the current projects. I think being on time and under budget goes a long way with voters. I think Tyler Proud probably has some data that might give you some insight into when and what. So I think that historically, the people in Tyler when presented with a thoughtful proposal that identifies and addresses the immediate needs, I think that they've been very supportive. It's just going to be a matter of figuring out, figuring out those questions, when and what.
Barbara, same for you. How would you determine when and what the Tyler community will support, especially in terms of a future bond proposition?
Well, basically, I'm not the one who will determine. The community will determine. And as I knocked on doors and I met with people in the community and business people, people are dissatisfied with this academic situation. They're not talking about bonds or building buildings. They want to see us step up to the podium. They want to see elected officials that know leadership and how to execute leadership. And so I believe that as time goes on and we win back the community, then we can look at the picture of presenting a bond issue to the community. Right now, we need to look at the internal problems in the school, discipline and academics, and change that attitude. And then we can approach the bond issue. And I believe, once we do that, the community will be willing to move right with us in terms of doing another bond issue. And I believe, once we do that, the community will be willing to move right with us in terms of doing another bond issue.
Okay, well, those are the questions that we had. We want to take, let's see, it's about 7:15. So why don't we take some questions and answers from the audience, if you have any right now. We'll do the same format. We'll give everyone an opportunity to answer and give them two minutes, so. All right then.
My name is David Henderson, the president of TISD, Gary Vos, Lee, that's the 64th day of his anniversary recently. My wife and I moved to Tyler, moved back to Tyler in 97. I was grossly overweight after 20 years of sedentary life in New York City. And I hit the Robert E. Lee track and worked on it and worked on it. It took me sometimes even being a jog racer, four times to make a mile. I got up to where I could do maybe, you know, seven miles at a time. And then one of the recent superintendents decided to invest several million dollars in rebuilding the Lee and John Tyler tracks and decided that now they were too expensive to be open to the public. And I asked at the time in the Tyler paper, and the Tyler paper registered my, what is it about public education that the Tyler school board doesn't understand? If you are elected or reelected to the school board, you know, we have a health issue. We need more people on those tracks, either walking or jogging or whatever. I mean, at any given time, before they closed the tracks, there were 10 or 15 citizens, you know, walking, jogging around the track. Would you reopen the John Tyler and Robert E. Lee tracks if you were elected or reelected?
I'm going to give that to you, Farby. No, Andy probably has a little more knowledge possibly, so. Good luck, Andy.
David, thank you for the question. You know, I, I use the track as much as anybody and, and I miss the track as well. The issue came when the money was spent on the field and on the concession stand and on the upgraded bleachers and the money put in there, but really more to the field. It's a balance of, of using taxpayer money and having a field that we can keep that'll last the 11 years that it's supposed to. Or if it's getting used every minute of the day and it only lasts six years, you know, have we really gotten a good investment on that? At any given time in the spring or in the fall, you may have three to four different groups using that turf field at one time, between the cheerleaders and the soccer team and the football team and whoever else. It's crazy out there, but it's been great. So that's been the balance. One thing that I have been told is at the three new middle schools, at Three Lakes, at Moore and at Boulder, they will have tracks and that those tracks will be open to the public. Now, you know, that's a.
Those are terribly convenient to those of us who live in Tyler.
Yeah. Well, I'm open. I'll just say this, I'm open. You know, depending on what, you know, what the other input is on it. But I do, I do feel for you because I'm going through the same thing. Took my track away too.
Basically, when I hear a question from a parent, a teacher, faculty member, I take it back to the board. And so everything that comes, like, I would bring it to the board, discuss it, see what we can do. And we believe in the taxpaying dollars and we want to please you as much as possible. So I'd bring it back to the board, let them decide what they want to do.
Eric.
You know, I, I understand, just from, I have a turf grass background, so I know about athletic fields. So I understand, I understand their point, which is you have to get a certain number of years' life out of them. So, you know, I can, I can kind of see both ways, but, you know, I'd love to help you out.
And maybe there's, maybe there's an alternative that, you know, that we hadn't thought of. You know, maybe, maybe we put a, a track in at the location that doesn't have turf, you know, that the public can use that's nearby them.
Okay.
I'd like to direct my question mostly to Andy because of your experience. But I met with another political group last week that expressed to me their desire for the Tyler City Council and TISD to work together and asked me what areas could we work together in? And I'd like to ask you that question. Do you think there are areas of Tyler City Council that Tyler community should work together on?
Well, I mean, other than the obvious, like getting an overpass over Old Jacksonville. You know, I would say our mentoring program that we're doing right now is huge. One of the reasons in my mind, and I think there's other people that would agree, that we can't seem to bridge the achievement gap is that a lot of these kids, when they leave us at 3:30 or 4:00 in the afternoon, they go either and run the streets or they go home to a situation that isn't as good as what it, what it would be at school. And trying to bridge this gap with these mentors that'll come in after school and do, even do homework with the kids. Pride with the ACE program. The ACE program's underfunded, in my opinion. That is basically like an after-school, you're supposed to sit down and do your homework, but you've got two people watching 50 teenagers. It just doesn't work that way. So if there's any way, I think the city could, could partner up with us in that mentoring program, that would be a great opportunity. Other than that, you know, I'm not sure they, they, you know, we kind of do our own, own thing on the education side, but certainly all support over the last, off and on, over the last 10 years has been great.
Did y'all like that?
Well, something you didn't mention, but I'd love the city council to come back and mentor the children, teach them about voting, because we're losing people because they're not voting. And then being involved in government. What are necessities that these students need to learn about being involved in government? And then in conjunction with that, to teach them about the founding fathers, what US thinks of it. I, I taught that when I was at TISD, the principles of this government and how it operates. So I would love for the city council to do that.
I think anytime that they can get involved with the kids, anytime you can get anyone involved with the kids, it's going to be a good thing. But to me, the obvious one is, is facilities.
My question is related to the initiative that Tyler Junior College has, an initiative to attract African-American males into college. Dr. Tam Nattan is over at the Achievement Dream Program. And she spoke at a community meeting at North Ten Hall Church. And she said, I'm literally begging and asking the community to help us get African-American males into Tyler. There is African-American male challenge. How would you address that issue to help us? We have met with administrative edge on Tyler to target those African-American males. We're trying to set up an assembly with them or seminar to attract that. Would you help us with that? It is a nation, it's a nationwide challenge. But we appreciate Tyler Junior College recognizing it and wanting to do something as an education institution to attract these young men and get them into college.
Go ahead, we're just going to rotate around.
Well, I'm grateful that the NAACP president is here tonight.
Amen.
And I believe that he's developing an initiative to reach out to the men so the men can be involved on, at high school, middle school, at elementary. So I believe we have a good representative here that can speak in regards to. And I would encourage you to network with him. He can tell you exactly what he's doing in the community to raise the black men to be involved in TISD. We met today and I'm inviting him today and I'm glad he's here tonight.
Great.
Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's the great thing about these right there. So, no, that's, it's great that they're identifying a need. I, I'd certainly love to do anything I can. I mean, we see the same, same issues in the Latino community as well, so.
One thing I didn't mention in Baltimore, I've been coaching seven-on-seven football in the summers for 17 years. And predominantly, most of my kids have been African-American males. And so I have gotten to watch and see a lot of what she's talking about. To me, we have, and that's what I love about football. The coaches and the programs demand high expectations out of their boys. And that's something that we can't lose. You're not doing a young man a favor by lowering expectations. And I think in TISD and in across nationwide, anytime I see where, where people talk about lowering expectations for certain groups, I shake my head, you're not helping that group. What we need to do is have more people like these coaches that take these kids and say, here's how a young man acts. Here's how a person gets to college. This is what it takes to get to college and this is what it takes to succeed. I don't care what color you are. So the programs like the leader in me that we're doing in elementary schools right now, start teaching some of them. You've got to have those high expectations from the minute they walk through our doors till they leave, no matter what.
Back when Andy Woods was built, there were like five schools at a pretty premium cost. We had four schools in the whole district that were rated by the state as improvement required. Now that we have these really nice schools, it's like five years later, we've got 11 schools with improvement required. Since, since it seems like it's not the building itself, what is it that we can do to improve our performance?
Andy, I'll flip it back to you. Okay. I think the facility has a good bit to do with it. It's not everything. Nobody thinks it's everything. I would hate to think what these kids would be doing, what condition they'd be in if they were in the old Jones or the old Austin Elementary right now. So facilities is nice. I think that some of the things we've talked about, that I just talked about in the last question, America's got a problem. It's not unique to Tyler. America has a problem. Public schools have a problem. And I have no doubt that every other schools, if they had to educate the same kids that TISD has to educate, would have the same problems. So I agree they're here. And we have to, my, my philosophy would be, we can't just keep doing the same things we've been doing. We're going to have to find other ways to take what comes through our doors and get results out of them. I've been told off and on that, well, that's just our demographics, so that's just the way it's going to be. And I think if you've gotten to that point, you probably need to move on to another district or another place. So there's no quick answer, otherwise everybody would be doing it right now. But we're, I would say I can speak for everybody in this room that volunteers their time. We're not ready to give up.
Well, my first year on the school board, when the test scores came in, I felt like crying. Because I know that with my kids in school and their, and their peers, we weren't concerned about them passing. So I look at the school now, there's no Latin. I say, I want Latin back in the school. Because Latin will teach you the basic foundation of any word, whether you be a doctor, a lawyer, engineer, or just knowing how to spell a word. I want to see the Latin, German. My daughter, my daughter studied German at John Tyler. I just want to see us go back to the basics and teach these kids and give them. And when we don't have the best principal or the teachers, I know when my children went to school, when they had a Latin party, the whole school came to my classroom, faculty member. We have to embrace the whole system, whether that be kindergarten, elementary or middle school. And we have to join hand in hand with the system. It's one thing to say we have a problem, but we need the community, the parents and the students to come together as a team. And I believe we'll see major, major changes in the school system. And I know it's a national problem, but we're not going to go with what's going on nationally. I'm saying this school can make a difference if we have the right leadership in us.
Um, I, I agree, there's, obviously there's issues, but I think that, I think that expecting excellence, you know, a lot of what Andy says is, is, you know, you have to, you have to expect, you have to, you have to set goals high enough to, to be able to raise the floor too. So, so I think that that's part of it. The programs that we have are part of it. But I also think that just education as a whole is, is, is on this path to where you have to be innovative and, and you have to try new things and you have to constantly get more and more creative because we're to the point now where everyone's walking around with all of human history in their pocket. So is it more important now to, to know that Millard Fillmore's the 13th president? Or is it more important now to know how to find that information and have it readily available? So I think that, that sometimes when you talk about getting back to how it was, maybe it's not the best thing for the kids. I think that, that at the same time, you need to be thinking about, how can we get better? How can we get better and continue to get better?
Yes.
I, I graduated from John Tyler in 1979. And prior to that, I would have to say, makes me proud to come to Tyler, to be in the school this world. Because we have put out some great people out of Tyler, TISD. The problem that I have, and I, I'm good friends with a lot of people here, but when my mom was a school teacher, when she wasn't at school on a certain day, she requested a certain substitute teacher. And when that substitute teacher come in, she was not a babysitter. Since I've been back, I'm very surprised of who can be a substitute teacher. And they don't come with the quality as what it used to be in the past. And I think that we need to focus on education. And if that teacher is away, when a substitute teacher comes in, she continues that curriculum. That is very important in school because it makes me proud to see such a small town who has so many 辱惑 people who've gone off to college, who've gotten degrees such as Reverend Mason. They were our example. When we were growing up, we looked up to them. And the main thing they talked about was education. That's gone now. Our parents told us if we wanted to make it, get a good education. My father said, I can't give you this, I can't give you that, but I can give you an education. If you get the education, you can get everything else. That, we need to go back because when we were back, we were working hard. We didn't have to worry about these scores. We need, it's the, it's the teachers. It's what you all want to come in. You're just settling for anything for substitute teachers. What is the board going to do? What are your criterias when it comes to a substitute teacher? What are your criterias when it comes, all these teachers account.
So your question is substitute teachers and teachers?
Right.
Okay. All right. Eric, I'm going to throw it down your direction and we'll come back to this again.
Well, when you're, you've been in charge of a workforce, you understand how hard it is to get good help. So I think that, that probably comes into part of it, where you kind of have to see the market to decide who can get it and who can't. So it's one thing to demand a certain level and, and for it to go unclaimed than it is to find substitute teachers. I think that that's probably challenging and, you know, that's going to be a management, a management part of the deal. I think you have to balance, you know, your demands versus, you know, your workforce and Tyler.
Barbara.
Well, you know, the other day I went to an event. This 43-year-old individual said, he was my substitute at Pied Elementary. He remembered me, but I didn't remember him. When you walk into an arena, whether you be a substitute or a full-time teacher, you have to invest. And you invest in that child as the division. And that's my philosophy for TISD. I'm investing in every single student. And I know that each student has the potential. And so when we. And so when we hire somebody, whether they be a full-time teacher or a substitute, we will make sure, the ladies here from, um, who hires, we will make sure that they are the best of the best. Amen? Because even Dr. Crawford said, we just don't want a teacher, but we want a teacher that has a heart and a passion for the students in T I S D. And so I believe that when we look for people of those qualities, we will see the tables turn. And they not, will not only be a substitute teacher, when I saw this young man, but it will be someone that they will remember throughout their life. I hadn't spent as my substitute teacher.
I, I think they're both, uh, I think they're both on track with that. Two things I see, you've got a limited amount of resources, meaning money, and, um, trying to prioritize that and pay teachers as much as you possibly can while still supporting all of the other things that the school district has is a challenge that, that we all face. Um, when I ran three years ago, I said, my five years off led me to understand one thing, that the teachers are really gonna get the job done. I mean, all of us, all the administrators, we're just, I mean, we're doing something, but teachers is really where it happened. And, um, you know, if you really want to see a change, someone asked me, what would you do if you could just change and fix everything in school? Start paying good teachers about twice what they're making now. Then you would see some people, because see, you've had several generations that just got into teaching because they love teaching. That less and less of that right now. You're seeing people get into hospital administration, you're seeing people get into other areas that pay more than teaching does and you don't have to put up with the kids today. So we're missing those people that were just out of loyalty would get into the teaching profession. So we either need to start paying more or I don't have a better answer.
Alright, maybe one or two more questions, okay, in the back, gentlemen?
Excluding, uh, leadership and experience, uh, it seems like you'll promote candidates that care about children, quality education, improved facilities. Uh, because you care about those things, uh, I would say equally, how do you distinguish yourselves as candidates in District Five?
Um, I mean, I think that, that obviously the biggest difference to me is that I'm a parent and I'm there every day and I'm picking up my kids every day and I'm interacting with students and students every day. And I know, um, what we face, parents face daily. You know, it's, it's, it's not the same as when I went to school. So, you know, there's math we have to deal with and, um, so I think that obviously that's the biggest, to me, that's the biggest, um, you know, for someone that's undecided, I think that that's, um, you know, that's the biggest, the biggest difference. My decisions are gonna be different.
Barbara.
Oh, okay, yes. Well, one thing is that, um, I have a diverse group here tonight. It's about two-thirds of people who back me. Um, if you're fifty, fifty or sixty years old, you know me in the community. You not only know me, but you know my kids and your reputation goes before you. I have three kids, um, grandkids in the, um, school system. And so I have leadership ability and I will continue to strive for academic excellence, no matter what side of the fence I'm on. Because I know these kids are, are determined, not just District Five, but all the kids in this district are entitled to the best education that they can receive here in this district. And so I'm, I'm invested, you know, I'm invested to, to do the work to help the kids, not just my kids. I don't have kids, but I have grandkids, but I don't have to be concerned about my grandkids. The other day he told me he took that test and, um, because he's already, he already knows where he's going, going MIT. So I don't have to be concerned about where my grandkids are going. I'm concerned about where are these kids in T I S D? Do they have a future? And that's why I'm involved.
I'm gonna leave you out of that. Look, my honor can't even fill up.
Yeah. Does anybody else have a question? We've talked a lot, I had a great, great thing tonight. I'm gonna wrap up real quick to just say that, um, it, you know, and I, I know all the candidates spoke on this, but I want to thank everyone for coming to see. What this tells me is that you are all involved and you are all carrying so much, about eighteen thousand plus students that walk into T I S D every day. And I think that's the thing that always centers, uh, everything, especially a group like this.